Well, now, item I. Harvey, you pulled up?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I pulled out of mine because I know there's several people in the audience that came here tonight to speak on this particular item. And I just wanted to say a few things about it and maybe you might want to save your time to speak for later when we get into the EIR. This is a professional services contract with Chevron Energy. We first looked at this back in 2004 and it wasn't feasible at that particular time to go ahead and go through with it. We've been working on it a long time. And it's, a lot of people think it's something that the city's putting in to try to make money out of. We hope we can make money out of it. But it's an item that the city, that we feel that we need to put it in in order to save our lifestyle that we live here in Norco. Because over the years, it's been getting harder and harder to get rid of the manure. It costs about $31 a tonne if we put it in a landfill. And I don't know how much longer the supervisors would even let it put in a landfill if we had to go back to that. Right now, we're putting it over at Veramontes, I believe that's what they're, $16 a tonne? $16 a tonne for us to get rid of that manure. What a cost of that manure could go real high getting rid of it if we didn't have Veramontes over here. For instance, over at the waste treatment plant, we're paying $60 a tonne to get rid of the bio sleds that come off of the waste energy plant. So, we need to find a way to get rid of our manure without having to haul it a long way or take it somewhere else. We need to be able to take care of the problem and solve our own problem by going to the city of Norco. And at the same time, take the opportunity to use whatever energy it can produce. And that's what we're going to do with the environmental impact report. So that people, it will tell us what it can do. And it will also give the community an opportunity to have all their input that they want to put on it at the different locations that we're going to look at. That's all I have to say. That's the one question.
Thank you, Harvey. That was good explanation.
You still going to open up the, in case somebody wants to talk?
Yeah, I got cards here. The first is it-
The agreement that I have in front of us, well, go back, staff report says agreement with CES Chevron is not to exceed $690,000. And the agreement, it's a fixed fee for $681,692. And I was-
So there's the question, which is which?
Which is which?
The initial proposal that Chevron presented to us, which is shown on exhibit C, was for $69,037, I believe. During the process of Department of Energy reviewing this contract, they identified one line item there which is about $8,000 dealing with Chevron's ability to include in their scope of work to go out and analyze or identify other sources of grants that might be used in the next phase of the project. While the DOE's position was, since we are funding this first phase with grant, we cannot pay for you to do grant work for that second phase. So that item was taken out of the proposal, the initial proposal. So the correct amount is in fact $680-
$681.
$681, yeah. It's $681.
Now, with that, and you correct that number amount was $8,400 for grants and incentives. But Chevron, in their contract that's presented tonight, in their scope of services under economics, still says they will provide to us in chapter five, grants and incentives. And then furthermore, they show it on their project schedule, item 18, research incentives and grants. So, by the scope of the work, I would assume that we would still get information on incentives and grants since it's in their scope.
I think Chevron is expecting to give that information to us, do that scope of work and give us that information.
Now- I would certainly expect that too.
But within the grant that is cost for that by DOE, there'll be no additional compensation for that.
So we're good at $681 and we still get the grant incentive information?
That's correct.
Then my last question was just on the, we're going to have with Chevron monthly progress payments. Can I expect that the project team will meet monthly with Chevron to make sure that we talk about schedule, that we're on schedule and where the work is being developed?
Absolutely, that will take place before the progress payments. As a matter of fact, the Department of Energy, as part of the monitoring of the grant, will request periodic progress report on this grant. And that will be submitted as part of the request for reinforcement from the DOE.
Okay, Andy. Thank you, ma'am.
Tim, do you have any questions? Kathy?
Just a comment. I know most of you, unless you've got it online recently, don't have this information in front of you. And I just wanted to let all of you know that I think this is amazingly exciting that the federal government has decided to give us a grant for $750,000 to just do the feasibility study. Again, this is just a study to talk about the possibilities of manure to energy through horse manure. And it's, no, there's, I know that I've gotten some calls today. There's no site that's even been determined yet. You know, they talked about the place in Norco, there are 12 acres, they talked about the Riqua plant. No site has been determined, the size of the building has not been determined. But to think that we have $750,000 coming to us from the federal government to help research this is really exciting news for folks who live in Horsetown, USA and care about keeping horses. Some of you might remember back a few years ago that the city of Norco received a fine from the MPDS, which are the storm throwing folks who believe that only rain goes in the drain. And we were, they found manure traces in our drain system and we were fined. And so, as HQMD, the Air Quality Management District, and all these agencies become more strict, we need to make sure that we are, have a long-term plan for keeping our manure clean and safe from drains and then able to maybe long-term even make money from it is a really great deal. And just to expand on Harvey's comment about the Veramontes, this is just a piece of ground that's a drying field. At any given time, if that field was not be able to be used for this use, Norco would be severely impacted with getting manure disposal. It would really, really be nearly cross prohibited for many horse owners here in Horsetown, USA with how expensive that could be. So I just wanted to share with you my enthusiasm about the possibility of having something like this in our area that will know that we can keep Horsetown, USA and horses here in perpetuity. Thanks. Go on.
Thank you. Now, I'll open up the, we're carrying the people that have cards. First one is Jim Isler. Yes, sir. Remind everybody you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. I want to make everyone aware, I just found out about this last Thursday and started doing some research. And one of my main concerns is this smelling project. I went online and I found that a lot, there's only a few plants right now available. And they all had to be shut down because of the smell. And I know where the location of the plant was over on River Road and Bluff. And that batch will ride up to a lot of homes. And that could really present a problem. I was here earlier and likely I have a chance to talk to Harvey Sullivan. And he really opened my eyes. I mean, the first I'm looking at, here's a plant that, you know, is going to be smelly and lit, looking at the bad side of it. And after speaking with Harvey, I found out that there are some good points, you know, like where's this brought up? The fact that it is going to cost a lot in the future to get rid of the manure and we do have to have proper facilities for it. But we do need to keep in mind that the people that live here do have a right to live without the smell of something right in their backyard. And I think that there, I know this will be reviewed in the future, but it needs to be brought up that there should be some other locations that might be better for this particular plant. Thank you. And then I'll see you.
Thank you, sir. Next car is Patrick Duke.
Good evening. I just found out about this tonight, couple of quick things. $750,000 sounds great, but it's shit in your backyard. And when the areas is right where we're talking about, River and Bluff, it's going to be a huge smell. Manure produces methane. The biggest amount of methane comes from cows. It's written that four stomachs, cows have one stomach. Our manure sits for a week, two weeks at a time, we put it up. Most of the methane goes up in the air, it's not going to end up in that little thing. So, to begin with, it sounds good, but you're going to end up getting cow shit from somewhere. And that means trucks are going to bring it in. You look at big plant, just started in Kansas, 220,000 cows on drapes, shit goes down, they utilize it every day. That's where they get the methane. The methane from cows is good. Horses is not very good. And it sits on the ground for a week. We try to pick up a horse shit, but it doesn't happen every day and it sits on a container. That methane is going up doing the greenhouse effect. So, I think you guys are starting on the wrong way because somebody's eating a lot of that manure. And flies smell, truck traffic, you're going to have trucks delivering manure 24/7 because you're going to have a plant and it's going to need manure to make the methane. So what's going to happen? You're going to say, we need money. And so you're going to allow cow shit to be brought there from all over, not from Norco because we don't have very many cows. The next thing is explosion. Methane combined with oxygen is extremely explosive. One methane gas combined with oxygen in the air is extremely explosive. You look at the buildings, how thick they have to be. And the other thing, the storage is methane, they have to put it in really thick things because it's under pressure. 5,500 PSI, really highly dangerous. If it explodes, it's going to make one hell of a noise and that's down by me. I don't want it. I don't think most people. The other thing, you can ask your fire chief here, the manure fires in Chino, because we live over there, we see it at least once a month, they have a manure fire. Takes them days to put it out. Three to four fire engines with four guys on it, stand there and man it. That's where we take our horse shit. And the fire, Red Star Place over there is always on fire. And where are we going to get the money to pay our fire department to man it? That plant isn't going to get it back. At the end of the day, that horse shit is still going to be there. Methane comes out, you're ended up with sludge. It's called horse shit. You still have to get rid of the horse shit. It doesn't go anywhere. The same amount of horse shit comes in, methane comes out, you still have horse shit on the other side. You have to deal with it. I don't know where you're going to get rid of it, it's going to have to go somewhere. It's still a pile of horse shit. You lose that much volume, zero. You make money maybe on methane, but methane produces, one-third of the energy is propane. Why? You can't liquefy methane. Liquify makes the best method to make fuel and energy. And methane doesn't. So you have something that's not very efficient and convergent. So it takes a lot more space, containers, and containers are explosion. In conclusion, I'd like to say that allowing the manure plant to my house or in Norco, it's like throwing a mass murderer next door. The parole officer thinks it's a good idea. So if you guys think it's a nice area, build the shit house next to your house, not down south by us.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Don Gensler.
Thank you and good evening. Appreciate the time to talk. Like Pat said, and not so many S words, we're, we all enjoy our lifestyle here in Norco and we all bought our homes with a slight smell in the air. And we know it's there. We just don't want to bring any more in. We're also concerned with what's going to happen with our neighborhood. And I'm talking about the River and Bluff. We don't disagree that this type of energy is exciting, you're getting $750,000. Let's just not put it in a neighborhood. We have what we consider, and I have many of my neighbors here, a very desirable neighborhood to live in. And in a depressed time, when our home prices are going down, we'll never be able to sell our homes next to a crap factory. We've got, we're going to be bringing in, we want horses running through our trail, it's not big trucks carrying crap. What we'd like to do is see it at the original site, cross the river. There aren't people. We don't have a problem with that. You know, it's good for Norco, but let's, you know, it's your job, I think, to take care of your citizens as well. It's our homes and that's why we moved here. We know that there's a dairy next to us. Someday it might go away, it might be a bonus for us. But we don't want additional flies, we don't want additional people running around that we don't, that we don't know in our neighborhoods. We don't want trucks, we don't want lights, we don't want a factory. We want rural living, not a factory. Just keep that in consideration. Again, where there's not people living, not going to hear anything from us. But you start putting it next to our neighborhood, I mean, this is the very first time that we, we just heard about it at 2:00 and we got a big pile of our neighbors over here because it's that important to us. And we'll do whatever it takes to fight this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marian Vager.
Sorry, this is pretty last minute for us too. We just heard that about two hours ago. So, I have more questions than I have soapbox to stand on. I've got two small children that lay outside all the time. Same as Don said, you know, we love rural living here and we're okay with a little bit of the smell, but in the 20 years I've lived here, it's got progressively better. And that's a testament to you guys and what you've done with the city. And as a horse owner, I know that I pay for my waste disposal and I know it's a luxury for me to have horses, not a right. Why wouldn't I be expected to cover the full cost of my waste removal? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions, if I can ask and somehow get a written response later or verbal response? Is that it?
After the meeting, talk to Bill.
I'd like my questions on the record though because I think a lot of my fellow homeowners have similar questions.
I said you can go ahead and ask them now.
Okay. First, I want to know where the other similar Chevron plants are that we can look into and find out how they're operated. I looked online and I could only find proposals, but none that have ever gone through. When your environmental impact study is done, how much time will the affected homeowners be given for rebuttal and research? How many tonnes of waste does Norco get rid of a day? I mean, it's $1,650 a tonne.
Let's answer it.
Oh, I like, we can answer later, sorry.
Let's answer as you go.
As far as similar type plants, we're not sure there are any similar type plants because we don't know what type of plant we're going to build yet. Well, you know, spirit of this and the intent was to try to manage the manure disposal in perpetuity. What we found from that, through our experience over the last seven or eight years, is that there are a number of technologies available, we don't know which one we're going to settle with. We do know a couple of things with the environmental impact report, there's a minimum of 40 days, 45 days of response time. What this report is going to show us is that whether or not it is feasible through the environmental, the impact to the residents of the community, to the surrounding region, transportation, you know, the carbon footprints, all the trucks that go to River Road, let's say, and the River Road Bridge, go there today. And the manure all goes out that street and goes over into Chino currently as we speak. So if we don't have to go that extra 10 miles, that saves. We don't know all the answers. I don't know if that's what you're looking for. That's what the feasibility study, we're looking, we're entering into the agreement is to find out what that type of technology is. There's a number of technologies. We don't plan on composting. You know, that's what they're doing north of the river right now with the manure. The gentleman earlier was talking about composting, we're not composting. If we pick it up, we're going to, the technology will probably utilize it that day. It's not going to sit around and build these and that type of thing. So, but we don't know the answer. But the effect is going to be zero impact. I mean, that's the win-win situation here, I think, at the end of the day is that we want-
Zero impact for the residents.
We want a project that's zero impact for the residents of Norco as far as environmentally. I mean, why would we do something that would possibly impact you? That doesn't make sense.
So you're talking about putting it in the neighborhood that has some of the highest value homes?
We're not talking about putting it anywhere right now, we're looking at the possibility. I think that, you know, from a staff standpoint, we're not doing our due diligence if we don't look at possibly putting it at, let's say, properties that we currently own, which are, you know, if we have to go on by property, that's a whole other expense. And if we didn't look at the property in Norco versus the property outside of Norco, how would our neighbors feel about that? You know, we could put it in the middle of the desert and truck it, sure. But if we don't look at these things, we're not, we're not bringing back the facts to the general public and the residents of Norco. And that's what we're trying to do here. All we're doing is, we're going to get a study back that says this can work or this cannot work, or, you know, throw in the trash and forget it. Luckily, it's not any cost to any residents in Norco, we're getting a grant to do this.
Is your study going to also offset the cost of depreciation to the tax base?
Well, I'm sure we're going to look at all the effects. I mean, we're talking even down to labor at the end of the day. I mean, you know, to have people working at this facility. We have to go through the full gamut. Is it worth while to do this? And at the end of the day, when you get the report, then, Andy alluded to it a little earlier, and Councilman Newton, we then have to find funding to build the thing. We don't have money to build it. So, again, this is just, we're just looking at what are, what are the possibilities and how do we manage something that currently we don't have any control of, except that it may go up to $100 a day for you to remove your manure. And we don't want that to happen to you.
If I had a race car, I'd be expected to pay, why is the city shouldering half the responsibility for my hobby?
Oh, we do it for water, we do it for sewer, we do it for the street.
No, but those are, those are basic human needs. My horse is a basic human need.
It's Norco, Horsetown, USA.
I understand, but it's a privilege. You don't move into town and get handed a horse. I mean, you make the decision if you can afford to have a horse. And I guess my last question, and, you know, when you guys decide where to put it, I would think that it's not even arguable that most of the horses in town are east of the 15, but why we'd be considering two sites that are west of the 15 when there seems to be as much open land on the east side of town as there is on the west side of town, doesn't seem to make much sense. If you're going to put it where it's needed, put it where it's needed.
Well, the only reason why, I mean, specifically we picked that property, we currently own that property, and every truck drives by it today. If it's on the other side of town, trucks that do pick up manure on the west side, we then have to drive over to the east side, which is not out of question. But we're looking at feasibility, we're looking at whether or not this would be an effective facility that doesn't impact the residents of Norco. So, if we don't do that, everybody's going to say, why didn't you look at this or why didn't you look at that? We're trying to, we're trying to cover all the bases that we understand at this moment. As the feasibility study goes on, there's probably going to be new things that pop up that we're not aware of or that we want to be aware of. That's part of the process. We're just, we're not scientists here and sometimes when you want to go down the line, in fact, I don't think I've ever done anything personally that I knew exactly how it was going to turn out. I usually put the smartest people together we can so that we have to start down that path and figure out what is the best solution.
If you're the guy that lives on Bluff and Trail and has two little kids and you're going to have 18 millers coming through there, I'm pretty sure you know how it's going to turn out.
Well, I'm sure you know that. I'm not going to agree with that. I don't want to argue. I mean, I'm trying to, I don't have those answers.
Thank you. I have no more questions. So we'll bring it back to council. Does council have any more comments or questions?
Just a, sorry, maybe just a couple of comments that, please understand the first step of this is, and with any development project, you have to determine that you do have a project. And what might also help all of you is, you go on the computer, research a little on Assembly Bill AV32 along with the global warming initiative and what California's going to be required to do in the next five years. And I think what you're going to see is that this technology is new, this technology is ever-changing and it's going to become more and life that. The next five years, you're going to see more cities, more jurisdictions looking at some type of system. But it's a brand-new path that we're going down. And I think that's what Bill was trying to tell, tell you that. We need to find out if it's a viable project before we go any further.
I think a lot of the fear is a little premature and I personally don't like the site at the corner of Corrigan and River and Bluff. I think it's too small. I also understand your considerations. But you're premature because I have not been involved in a single conversation where we've actually talked about this. This is just a feasibility study. What you want to address though is, I honestly believe, and most of you know where I stand on this, we talk about our lifestyle as an equestrian lifestyle. We're the last city in the state of California, you've got to build on a half acre or more. You get rid of horses, you're not going to have those large properties because there's no reason to have them. We have large lots, we have, I mean, what Norco really is, is open space. And the last thing I want to do, by the way, to the entrance of Norco, is turn left at the crap plant. I really don't want to do that. But you're premature. You are worried, I mean, you are going to have so much time to be involved in this feasibility study. I mean, and truthfully, they are looking on the other side of the freeway. People have talked about, I've heard more talk about Wiley Lab, but a lot of it has to do with where are the transformer plants, where's the grid, how do you connect to the grid, does it really work? The truth is, and it's because of Bill, I think, we're way ahead of everybody else. I think we are so far ahead of everybody else because we have to get rid of this gigantic pile that I don't think anybody knows. But really, don't worry. I really, don't worry, there's going to be lots of time and there'll be lots of room for input. That's the process. You'll be able to stand at that podium over and over and over again, so.
Ken, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I guess I just really wanted to drive home that this is just, still just talking about it. And I think I just wanted to verify with Bill, don't we have to just earmark a few possible sites as part of the project or the feasibility study? Don't we have to do that?
Yeah, well, I mean, it'd be kind of ridiculous if we didn't identify a site and, you know, we can't build it in the air and we can't just say we're going to put it out in the middle of the desert at this point. So, for it to be feasible, you have to have sites. And if we own the sites, we're also going to look at what would the cost per square foot to buy additional sites or another site or another place. But you have to start with something to make it even work a while or we're just wasting our time. I don't think it's a waste of time to look at an alternative and a potential solution for the big pile of seed that sits in everybody's backyard anyway that we move out and we stick it in somebody else's backyard in another community. It's time we took care of what we have and figure out how to do that in the best manner possible without an impact. If that's a win-win, that's what we're looking for. We already know we can put it in a landfill at $35 a tonne. We know currently we can put it in Veramontes for $16 a tonne. Those are our alternatives, all the alternatives that we have. We also, we ship our sludge from the waste plant all the way to Arizona, there's another one, but that's $9 a tonne. So we know those are there. We don't know how long they're going to be there, but if we do something in this vein with potential, then we can manage it long past my time anyway.
Okay, so that's just what I, just wanted to make sure that everyone, and I just want to thank you all for coming. And what I love about Norco is the passion of people and that you come and it's, even though it is premature, I agree with Councilman Bash on that, it's great to know how you guys feel and we'll certainly be keeping that in mind in the future when this feasibility study comes back. And I certainly hope that all of you do stay tuned and make sure you're aware when it is coming back. And we'll talk about it again. And I do really, it's just my speculation, but to me, the Riqua plant does make the most sense because those kind of facilities are already there. But again, it's just so premature, the feasibility study will tell us some of those answers when we get it back. Thank you.
Harvey?
I just wanted to say one more thing. Bill, you might be able to shed some light on this. The city, the cities in Riverside County have been mandated to cut back 50% of what they put in a landfill at this time, right?
That's correct.
They could go to 75%, is that correct? They talking about it?
They're talking about going to 75%.
They're talking about going to 75% currently, AV393? No, 939. 939. I'm dyslexic, no, not really. But yeah, that, the mandate is 50% that we have to defer from the landfill.
And Norco was one of the first, was the first city in Riverside County that met that 50% mandate because we were able to do something else with our manure, right?
That's correct.
So if we wasn't, the Veramontes, we didn't, we had to put it back in landfill, we could be subject to the fine for going over that 50%.
That's correct.
There's a lot of things that we've got to worry about in the future, not just, and that includes other types of trash that I'm sure in the feasibility study, we'll find out if it can burn regular household trash, plastic bags, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we'll be looking at the full gamut of reuse, and what we can do with that, and green waste and sludge, and, you know, we may or may not be able to use any of them. The gentleman that spoke first used a different letter than C. He was, he was accurate in some areas as far as, you know, how many BTUs you can, you can generate from just plain manure. I mean, in the old days, when we started these plants back in, you know, the old days, the 80s, a lot of what we used was what we call fog, which is fat, oil, and grease. Everybody that generated restaurants and dressing companies, they, they needed a place to get rid of their fat, oil, and grease, but we called that the sugar. We put that on top of things like green waste, and it increased the heat, so we got more energy out of it. Today, fat, oil, and grease is a commodity. Now they, they don't give it to you anymore, they sell it to you. Well, we don't want to get into the business of exactly what another one of the people that came up and talked about is bringing additional waste or trucks into the city. That's not, we're not in, we're not in the profit business, we're in the, we're in the management and manure business, that's what we're looking at. We don't want, we don't want to encourage people to bring, bring additional products here.
And I do want to thank all of you that came out tonight on such a short notice, and would you please leave your name and address for me the next time I have a audience, you only attempt that, I want you to come down and support me.
Yeah, Bill, on this book that we got last week, it mentions horse manure, sludge, fat, oil, grease, food waste, green waste, trash. It doesn't mention cow manure, because that's a totally different type plant that burns that, is that correct?
That is. You know, I'm sure there's a few cattle in town, I'm not aware of where they're at, but I'm sure they're here. That isn't our focus. That's a whole different process. Over in the Chino Basin, in Chino, the Inland Empire Utility Agency, they actually had a facility over there where they used the cow manure when the dairies were all here. And what they did is, they actually used what they called, what was, the hooper-scooper trucks, and they actually, they house all the, and do their thing on concrete, and they come and scoop it up while it's wet because there's power in that when it's fresh, and then they deposit it at the plant. But that plant also had one fatal problem. It became apparent that they needed to start charging the dairies to deposit that manure at the plant. And so when that happened, they got to a place where it cost more for the dairymen to have a truck and pick it up with their scoopers and deposit at the plant than it would just put it in the landfill. So they all said, forget it, we're putting it in the landfill. And by the time they tried to remedy that, it was too late, and then also the fog, that was so expensive. The plant is basically mothball. We don't want that to happen, that's the reason why we're going to the extent we are with Chevron. We're looking at a technology that will be feasible, just want to get it now as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, second, hold on the board.